If we could call the Tuesday, February 15th, 2022 Board of Commissioners Business Meeting to Order, please. At this time, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance and then the invocation led by Commissioner Earl Polesky.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation indivisible, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Father, thank you for being here tonight. We thank you for a number of things this evening. We thank you, first of all, for the healing of Jeremy Alexander, who we understand is in town and whose body is responding well to your hand. We appreciate that very much. We thank you for the citizens who are here tonight, who are taking an interest in their government, and we appreciate that very much. We thank you for all of your blessings. And now we pray for peace and reconciliation in Eastern Europe between Russia and Ukraine, that there might be peace there, and bless us as we deliberate this evening and consider the work here more locally. All these things I pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Could you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Baer?
Present.
Commissioner Walz?
Present.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Here.
Commissioner Duckham?
Here.
Commissioner Polesky?
Here.
Commissioner Alexander? Commissioner Williams?
Present.
Commissioner Snell?
Here.
Chairman Chatwell?
Here. Thank you. Entertain a motion to approve the adjournment?
So moved. Support.
We have a motion from Commissioner Kennedy, support from Commissioner Duckham. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried. We have no awards and recognition, any communication and petitions. Any communications and petitions. Hearing, seeing none. We have no special orders nor public hearings. We've arrived at the first opportunity for public comment. The public comment guidelines are simple. Each individual will state their name. They have three minutes to address the Board of Commissioners. You may only address the board once under this public comment opportunity and may not yield your time to others. Board members will not debate nor answer questions at this time. Public comment is now open to the public.
Hello, my name is Kim Mulvihill, live in Summit Township. And I understand that there is the potential for part of Cascades to be sold off. I would like to say that I am against any part of Cascades being sold off. It is a public park and it is, was donated to remain a public park. And with all, with all of the United States, pretty much everywhere, they are working to increase green spaces, not decrease green spaces. They are working to improve public gardens, public areas, improve all of those things so that we have a better ecology and more areas for people to work and play. Our play areas are essential. It is, all of Cascades is an attraction. We were even on Jeopardy. It is a beautiful part of Jackson. Selling off any of that would be detrimental to the area. The area that want, that they're talking about selling also is a lot, number of trees. The trees are helping to absorb some of the groundwater that is affecting the houses in the area. Those things would negatively impact the neighborhoods. Let's keep our green space, let's keep our parks, let's expand the parks, and not sell off Cascades. Thank you.
Ms. Mulvihill, would you please spell your last name? Thank you very much.
You bet.
My name is Elaine Wolf Baker. I'm here to support my neighbors and others that are requesting that the county board rescind their vote to sell off the piece of the Cascades, Sparks Foundation Park. My reasons, the green space, which was once the Sparks family's side yard, was never developed for reason, because it kept the water from rolling downhill into their lodge, or what they now call the, the locals call the carriage house, and the owners now call the gate. It kept the water from the other homes along Kibbie Road, as well as my neighborhood, the corner of Douglas Street and West. My second reason, the green space supports approximately 28 mature trees and approximately two to four acres of grass. According to science, each tree approx, uses approximately 11,000 gallons of water every year or every growing season, so that's around 308,000 gallons of water yearly that is used and taken up and not sent on to the homes that are slightly lower elevation. My neighborhood at Douglas and West Avenue, right across the street, three doors down, already has severe ongoing basement flooding due to high groundwater levels in this area. Houses are getting severely damaged. It is important for all of us, and especially our elected leaders, to understand our watershed and work with nature to protect our lakes and streams, our natural areas, our parks, as well as our existing homes. Once this land is developed and the trees are chopped and the grass is paved over, you will have unleashed the water that was once contained, and we can't change it back very easily. Land management is becoming more important than making a fast buck. We want to make Jackson a better place to live. This is home to me. My great-great-grandparents, the Snackenburgs, settled in Waterloo in 1835 and built their home on the corner of Seymour and Tripp. My other great-great-grandparents' home was a waste stop, an overnight stop actually, for the Underground Railroad. My great uncle was a Regent of U of M. My great aunt, Marita Wolf, wrote the book Whistle Stop in Grass Lake. And my great aunt, Merdy's, house is the Coe Museum out there. My family's always been a part of the history of Jackson County, so I'm compelled to try to make it a better place to live. I ask your board to take into consideration good land management of our watershed and how it's interwoven. One part affects the other. Cut down this and pave that. In the long run, good land management is more important. Thank you.
My name is Benjamin Whiting. I am a resident at 788 Bloomfield, adjacent to the property that has been spoken of this evening, the three parcels located at Kibbie and West Ave. I'm in opposition and I implore this board to reconsider its decision to consider this property surplus. In addition to the comments that have already been brought forward to this board about the environmental impact, I can speak with 34 years of experience with this property, having grown up in that neighborhood and now a homeowner. This is not surplus property. Surplus implies that it is not being utilized, but I can tell you, almost on a daily basis, especially when the weather is nice, this is not unutilized property. Communities, our community, uses this green space. Families from the neighborhood go there to run their dogs, take their kids out there to play catch, throw frisbees. And who can deny, three times a year, on Memorial Day, Fourth of July, and Labor Day, members from all over Jackson County come to the Cascades Park to watch the fireworks. There are people that will park in my neighborhood from surrounding areas, not even from the nearby areas, to park their cars, walk with their families, and to go watch the fireworks from, from launch from Cascades at this very field. This is a family-oriented place that is utilized not only by the surrounding neighborhoods, but also by families from all over Jackson County, to watch fireworks, to engage in extracurricular activities. This is the one shining gemstone of Jackson County that is utilized where we're ahead of the game. We have this great green space that we utilize, and to sell it on off, not only is nearsighted, it violates the public trust that the Sparks family placed in this commissioner's body. Commissioners before you have stood up and invested in the Cascades Park, so it's there for today and for tomorrow. I'd ask that this commission rescind its decision to sell these three parcels. It is not surplus. It is very valuable to the community and has intrinsic value moving forward. So again, I would implore this body to rescind its decision to sell these three parcels and preserve it for the future of Jackson County. Thank you.
My name is Patricia Gaynor. I live in Jackson County. The history of Cascade Falls were the result, it was built in 1932. It was the dream of William Sparks to do something for the people of Jackson and to build an attraction that would provide visitors with a positive impression of the city. Directly west of the Sparks home was swampy bogland, but I think to sell the property would be against what the person that donated the land was against his wishes. I think it would make a really great place for a dog park. We really don't have a decent one in the Jackson area. I know they built one on Blackstone, but there's no place to park. And anytime that I've ever tried to go there, there's never been any dog in there because there's no place to park. Not only that, it's kind of put into a, a little bit of a dicey, right in front of a dicey apartment complex. I would feel uncomfortable going there and taking my dog. So, but anyway, I think this is a great place, as, as, as the previous person stated, it's a great place for family to throw frisbees, to, I think we could make it multi-use and really use it for the intent that the owner gave it.
I want to talk about the incident of October 15th, where Deputy Reed of our Sheriff's Department shot an unarmed person. Jerry, our prosecuting attorney, reviewed the case and determined that it was self-defense. He relies on People vs. Riddle, which mainly states that a person must retreat if they possibly safely can. But there is the line that Jerry relies on, and it says, "A person is not required to retreat from an attacker who he reasonably believes is about to use a deadly weapon." Now, the police had received an order for involuntary mental treatment that was issued by the probate court, and they were out there to pick up this individual. And they had been told that he had a 12-gauge shotgun and that he intended to use it if the police tried to grab him and incarcerate him to a psychic institution. Now, I want to say that we shouldn't be putting our police in these dangerous situations on the basis of a Lifeways evaluation. And you know, Commissioner Baer, Commissioner Kennedy too, I hear you speak a lot about freedom. In this case, a person is unconstitutionally seized by the state without the right to confront his accuser, without the right to give testimony, without the right to cross-examination, without any of the due process rights that we as Americans take for granted. You are in control somewhat of Lifeways. You are the overseeing board. I would like you to investigate this. You can't talk about freedom and, you know, say, "Oh, well, this little mask is an annoyance", and then support the seizing of our citizens. And many times, I've, since I started investigating this, I found out that this mechanism in the courts is used by family members for revenge or retaliation. So if Lifeways is going to evaluate a petition for mental health, this is their form, and I'll read you what they said in this case.
Thirty seconds, Peter.
Petition appears clinically appropriate based on information provided by the petitioner. Lifeways did not evaluate the person being petitioned. This is unconstitutional and unacceptable. Thank you.
Jennifer Biddinger. I always seem to follow Peter. Tonight, I'd like to speak about the continuing dangers of the COVID vaccine. I know as the county commission board, you've been wonderful in some areas, but you still oversee the county health department, and I still see it as a problem, especially since they've been going after our children. Just want to, to make it clear that they need to know the dangers of this vaccine. Do they know that the definition of vaccine has been changed by the CDC? According to the CDC, the COVID vaccine will not prevent infection or transmission of COVID-19, as opposed to in the past, when you get a vaccination, you believe it's going to prevent you from getting that disease. Do they also know that according to the CDC and FDA, COVID vaccines pose risks of myocarditis, blood clotting, neurological damage, and death, to name a few, predominantly in adolescents? I know for a fact, I went to my local pharmacy and asked for their 20-page thing about the vaccine. It said nothing about death. It said nothing about myocardi, you know, the different serious injuries that are caused by it. According to historical medical data, 50% of people who get myocarditis will die of a heart attack or require a heart transplant within five years, especially children. Do they know that according to VAERS, there have been 19,532 deaths from the COVID vaccines in America alone? I ensure that these people who are now giving it to their children are not made aware, and I see it as very important that you as the help, the county commissioners that oversee your health department, make sure these dangers are adequately presented to the public. So, thank you so much.
So I'm here to talk about Cascades. Your name is, sir, please? Nathaniel Mulvihill. Live in Summit Township. I heard about selling off a piece of Cascades, and I know that wasn't in Sparks's intent when he left the property. To sell off a piece of a public park is a horrible choice when that, it's not what it was designed for. It's not, you can't sell it off as, as, you know, ways to, to offset inflation, as ways to offset other poor financial decisions. That's not a, I guess, in my opinion, I'm sorry to misuse the word, but that's, that's kind of sacred ground you're walking on, guys and girls. So I think you've heard enough people who know what they're talking about as far as the ecological impact, but I wanted to make sure you understood that just morally, it's a poor choice to be entrusted with land and then to sell it off. Makes you look bad, it makes us look bad. And then before my time's out, yes, there are absolutely risks associated with getting the COVID vaccine. There's also risks associated with driving a car, there's risks associated with me walking into this meeting this evening. The numbers of people that have been damaged by the vaccine far under, are much, much, much less than the millions of people who have been helped by that same said vaccine. Thank you for your time, gentlemen and ladies.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Armida Purs. It's A-R-M-I-D-A-P-E-A-R-S-E, and I live at 1714 Fourth Street. I have been a member of this community for 37.5 years today, and I'm not from the Michigan area, but I did end up coming to Jackson. I grew up in a larger city, so I wasn't too thrilled about coming to Jackson when I first moved here, but I can tell you that I love being here. It is my community of choice because of what Jackson has to offer. And over the last 37 and a half years, I have seen a lot of wonderful changes, changes for the community, changes to entice people to come to Jackson, changes that show the community that they want people here, they want people to enjoy what we have to offer. The three parcels that you're considering selling, we have used for a lot of years because I live right there, right by it. We've gone to every fireworks display that there is because we don't want to fight the traffic, and people do travel, they travel from other communities and park all the way down on our street, and they walk all the way up to the, to the hill there. My daughters have played there. My daughter used to own the lodge, and it's now called, I can't remember, they, they've changed it. So we used to play in the park there. My dogs used to pull our granddaughter around on a sled because I have a husky, so that's always been a fun place to go. I walk my dog there a lot more than I do in the park because there's so much goose poop in the park, and I have a puppy who likes to eat things that she shouldn't be eating. So we do spend a lot of time walking in that park, and I would like to see a dog park. It would be nice to have something that we can walk to. But anyway, Jackson is a wonderful community. We have all these wonderful bike paths and walking paths, and it would break my heart to see us lose that entrance to the Cascade Park. It's just kind of a wonderful entrance when you go into the park. So again, I would like you not to sell this property, leave it as it is, and find some other way to generate some funds. Thank you.
I'm Stephanie Riley. I live here in Jackson. Talking about the vaccines and the mandates and all that, seeing that there's lots of evidence coming out, I would just like to point out a website that you could go to that are physicians and lawyers pointing out the tragedies and the things that are happening with that. It's called the Grand Jury, the Court of Public Opinion. You could go to grandjury.net, and there's actually hours of long information about the vaccine, so I would just like to point that out. And I'm with these people in the parks, and I would love, I live down by there too, about five blocks away, and I would hate to see that go. Thank you.
I'd just like to read out of Revelation, Revelation 1823. "And the light of a candle shall shine no more at all in you; and the voice of the bridegroom and the, and the voice of the bride shall not be heard no more at all in you. For your merchants were the great men of the earth; for by your sorceries were all nations deceived." I looked up the word sorceries. It says, "By your sorceries all nations were deceived." When you look up that word sorceries in the Greek, it's pharmakia, pharmacy. All nations were deceived by your pharmacy.
I live in Leonie Township. And speaking on changing definitions, now they changed the definition of vaccine to get people to take it. I'm wondering if I were to take feces and put it in bar form and change the definition to chocolate, how many people would eat it? Just curious. Thank you. Have a nice night.
My name is Tim Sparks. I'm the great-grandson of Cap Sparks and Cap Antilli, and I actually came to the meeting this evening as an information gathering step, because I recognize that this wasn't the, wasn't an agenda item, you know, for the, the meeting tonight. But I'm encouraged by all of the citizens' comments and interest in, in retaining the properties surrounding the park. From some of the preliminary steps that I've made, it's actually not part of the park, if I, if my facts are correct. But nonetheless, it is green space, it is, it is, you know, a beautiful spot. I've lived for the first 20 years of my life, two doors away from, from that entrance too, and, and we used to walk our dog there and so on, but I'm, if there's other, other pieces of property that you can look at and to use for, for generating revenues and to leave that as, as an entryway into the park, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Can I go again?
No, ma'am. Any other public comment? Seeing none, we've ended public comment. We have no special meetings of standing committees. Entertain a motion of approval of the minutes of the January 18th, 2022 meeting. We have a motion in support. Any questions? Additions, deletions? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. We've arrived at the consent agenda. Entertain a motion for the consent agenda? So moved. We have a motion in support. Any items for removal for this, further discussion? Seeing, or hearing none, man and clerk, could you post the vote? Consent agenda's passed unanimously, of those in attendance. Standing Committee, Public Safety Transportation, chaired by Vice Chairman Corey Kennedy. Commissioner Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tonight, we have some appointments to make. First would be for the Community Corrections Advisory Board. Currently, we did not have any applicants when it came time to committee time, but we did get some just after the deadline.
Are there any nominations then, sir? Commissioner Baer?
There are.
There any other nominations? Public, she's taking which one?
She would be taking the Community Corrections Advisory Board, the Pub, the Public Seat, Service Area of Mental Health, Public Health, Substance Abuse. I believe Mrs. Wooten works for Lifeways.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Any other, hearing, listening for any other nominations? Hearing none? All in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Duly carried. Commissioner Kennedy?
The next, for the same board, would be for the City of Jackson Police Chief or Designee. The current member is Chief Elmer Hitt. He however, has a proxy designation of Deputy Director Sergio Garcia. He is the committee recommendation as well. He is the committee recommendation as well.
Any nominations from the floor? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried. Commissioner Kennedy.
The next on the same board would be the District Court Judge or designee, current member being Daniel Goustrie. He also has a proxy designation of Jeremy Burns, and I do believe that was committee recommendation last week.
Any mo, any nominations? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried. Commissioner Kennedy.
The last appointment for this board is the County Prosecutor. Current member is Prosecutor Jarzinka. Also is a proxy designation of Katie Resmirske, and I believe she was also the committee recommendation last week.
Any nominations from the floor? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried. Commissioner Kennedy.
That concludes business for public safety and transportation. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Standing Committee General Government chaired by Commissioner Phil Duckham. Commissioner Duckham.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have one position to fill tonight. It's on the Agricultural Preservation Board. And we've been advertising and.
No, you need to speak into your mic, please.
We've been advertising, not getting much response, but we have a member I'd like to, a citizen I'd like to nominate, that'd be Mary Walcott.
We have a motion in support. Is any other nominations from the floor? Hearing none. She'll be taking which seat, sir?
I don't have that, I don't have that on my.
Agricultural interest?
Yes. Yes.
That's what I'm saying. So we'll go with, we'll give, we'll go with her having the twenty, the twenty twenty-three Leaving the twenty twenty-two open and the twenty twenty-four is reserved for an elected official of a township government. So Mary's been nominated and supported. Any other nominations from the floor? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Congratulations, Mary. Commissioner Duckham.
That's all we have tonight, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Standing Committee Human Services chaired by Commissioner Ole Poleski. Commissioner Poleski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have appointments also. We have one opening on the Department on Aging Advisory Council for a public member. The term expires December of twenty twenty-three. The current member is Felicia Richmond. We've had no applicants and we would certainly entertain any nominations tonight.
Are there any nominations from the floor? Hearing none. We have no nominations again at this time. We will re-advertise for those positions, sir.
And I'll scour the world for the next person.
Thank you, sir.
I have nothing further than that, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Poleski. We've arrived at unfinished business, an item that was postponed from the January meeting. We have the elected official salary. You have before you an elected official's three-year wage forecasting graph, but you have an executive summary that comes from the Administrator Controller's Office for a three percent increase effective January first, twenty twenty-two. Commissioners, what's your pleasure? We're moving to approve the salary increase of three percent for each listed elected official effective January twenty twenty-two, ending December thirty-first, January of twenty twenty-two, or a different time-specific date, sir? This for one year or? Yes, sir. Commissioner Duckham.
Yeah, I'd like to take these individually.
Okay, that's fine. Commissioner Bear.
Relative to the prosecutor's salary, can you tell me how the public defender's salary
I cannot, no, sir.
Does our administrator have any?
Which is lower?
Ballpark number?
Public defender's salary is lower than our prosecuting attorneys.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, may I ask a point of order, sir?
Yes, sir.
There's a motion on the floor to act on the administration recommendation in total, and I would hope that we would either act on that motion or act to amend the motion.
I'm going to act on an amendment after everyone has all their questions answered.
Very good, sir. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Bear, further questions? Yes, sir.
Can our administrator tell me that for both the elected official salaries and the IT director salary, what counties were used as comparison for both of these categories? And what?
Well, I beg your pardon, Commissioner Bear, but I'll, we'll deal with the elected officials at this time, and when we get to the IT, we'll deal with questions about IT, okay? Instead of rolling that in here.
Okay.
Because we have a motion on the floor, and I would prefer to answer questions just to this matter.
Okay. So for the elected officials then, I'll narrow the question. Can he tell us what counties he reviewed as comparison and to what year the wage salary evaluations were made?
Yeah, we did not do a salary survey on this. We did last salary survey, what was that, five years ago? We did a salary study for all employees. This here is strictly an inflationary raise. The elected officials in question here, there's five of them who act as, effectively as elective department heads, and they have received a one percent raise in the last five years. This here was just strictly a three percent raise. It's more or less just based on what inflation was doing and what the board had done for the other non-union employees.
Yes, sir. Further questions?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Just one question for, for administration. We had a question, or I had a question, just relating to the end date of, of the salary increase. Does county administration have a recommendation?
Yeah, these are, these are perpetual. So if you give a three percent raise, they go on indefinitely unless the board were to choose to reduce wages of elected officials. And you can only do that once every election cycle just before a new election.
That's not the question.
Well, I'm just answering.
I understand, but what is his, if I may?
Please.
He's asking you, is that three percent twenty-three, three percent twenty-four, three percent twenty-five?
No, this was a, this was a one-year recommendation.
Correct my analogy?
Yes. I'm sorry, this was a one-year, three percent raise. I did not address next year or the year after.
Thank you. Further questions? Commissioner Bear.
The legislature were given three-year wage forecast. Now, are we voting tonight to approve just the three percent in twenty twenty-two? Or are we also voting for the two percent in twenty-three and the two percent in twenty twenty-four?
Is that a, are you making that in the form of a motion or is that a question, sir?
That was a question, which.
We will be following, unless otherwise noted in the form of a motion, we'll be voting on just the twenty twenty-two year. There were commissioners that had approached the chair that wanted to do an equivalent raise for our elected officials that what would be given to our department heads and also through union negotiations that we have offered to all of our employees instead of having to visit this every first of the year. Okay?
Okay, so then in twenty twenty-three and.
We'll vote on it again.
Vote it again.
Yep.
So it.
Unless you so choose to use this graph and make it a motion for it to be the three-two-two.
I'm comfortable with doing it for twenty twenty-two, but the recommendation for twenty-three and twenty-four, we're not being held to that. Twenty twenty-four, we could choose to give zero, we could choose to give fifty percent.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Okay, if we've completed the questions administratively on this, we have a possible amendment. Commissioner Duckham would like to vote on each one of these individually. I'm looking for support to that.
Support.
We have a motion in support to amend the vote to be individual or take it as one lump Follow my amendment, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
We'll be voting on twenty twenty-two only, and what we're voting on is whether we're voting on them individually or we're voting on them all together. That's fine.
Do you want me to call it now?
I'm comfortable with you doing that. So if you're voting yes, you're voting to individually vote for the clerk, the treasurer, the sheriff, the prosecutor, and the drain commissioner. If you're voting no, we'll be taking them as one vote, and there'll only be one vote cast. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Bear?
Yes.
Mr. Walls?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Duckham?
Yes.
Commissioner Poleski?
No.
Commissioner Williams?
No.
Mr. Snell?
Yes.
Chairman Shatwell?
No.
Three no's.
We'll be taking these as individual votes. With that in mind, we will be voting on the three percent rate, annual raise for twenty twenty-two, starting with the county clerk's register of deeds. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll when you're ready?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Commissioner Walls?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Duckham?
No.
Mr. Poleski?
Yes.
Commissioner Alex, excuse me, Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Snell?
Yes.
Commissioner Bear?
Yes.
Chairman Shatwell?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You'll now be voting on the treasurer's three percent increase.
Commissioner Kennedy?
No.
Commissioner Duckham?
No, no.
Commissioner Poleski?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Snell?
Yes.
Commissioner Bear?
Yes.
Commissioner Walls?
Yes.
Chairman Shatwell?
Yes.
Six yes.
Passes six yes.
Six yes.
At this time, we'll be voting on the sheriff's three percent. When you're ready, Madam Clerk, you can call the roll.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Duckham?
Yes.
Commissioner Poleski?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Snell?
Yes.
Commissioner Bear?
Yes.
Commissioner Walls?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Chairman Shatwell?
Yes.
When you are ready, you can call the prosecutor.
Commissioner Poleski?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Snell?
Yes.
Commissioner Bear?
Yes.
Commissioner Walls?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Duckham?
Clarification, which one are we voting for this time?
You're voting for a three percent increase for the prosecutor.
Okay, no.
Chairman Shatwell?
Should be seven one. You'll now be voting for the drain commissioner.
Have we allowed any discussion on this?
No, sir. Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Snell?
Yes.
Commissioner Bear?
Yes.
Mr. Walls?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
No.
Commissioner Duckham?
Yes.
Mr. Poleski?
Yes.
Chairman Shatwell?
We've completed the elected official salaries and the increase for their deputies for twenty twenty-two, correct? New business, IT director's salary, I entertain a motion?
Support.
A motion in support. Commissioner Bear, you had a question?
Yeah, just interested in knowing what counties were compared with what we are offering here and what wage rate studies might have been used.
Administrator Overton?
Thank you. I'm going to ask the HR director to come up since he led that effort.
Good evening, Commissioners. Yes, we utilize the Department of Labor and labor statistics. It's a federal database. We utilize the state of Michigan as a region. So you can specify any specific region that you have, and it was for a director of IT. So with that, it's specific, it's to our regional area. With that data, it reflected of an average salary of a hundred and fifty-one thousand one fifty for a director of IT. We're roughly thirty percent below average for the position.
Mr. Kennedy?
And that's based off local governments, or are you taking into account the private sector as well?
That includes the private sector as well as local governments. Local governments, you have a range of, when we did the Ottawa study from twenty twenty-one, it was roughly over five percent were behind for like counties.
Okay, so you did do a study on just governmental?
We did, Ottawa did.
Ottawa did.
Ottawa did. We did not.
And Jackson was behind five percent?
Just over five percent.
Just over five percent? Because this raise is quite substantial, it's more than five percent.
Correct, it is, and it is a very competitive market for directors of IT. So this was intentional, it was specific, IT and the wages that we could save for the technology and with what she's doing from an infrastructure costs and the savings she's providing to the county. I think we provided supplemental information to the board, so if you could review that. Once again, the savings she's provided to the county has been enormous through her leadership.
I would agree. Michelle's done a wonderful job, there's no doubt about it. But we still have to think about the dollars that we have going forward. Thank you for answering my questions.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Williams?
Just to be clear, I just want to make sure that I'm understanding this correctly, so that our current director is being paid thirty percent below where everyone else is?
For market, full market of the state of Michigan, if you do comparable counties, it's just under five percent, I mean just over five percent differential.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Nothing further, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Can I?
Before we vote, I'm sorry, one last question for, for administration. Now, all these, all of these raises, including this one, they've all been vetted and we can financially support these, correct? Without creating any shortfalls or anything like that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, I just wanted to make sure that was on the record. Nothing further, Mr. Chair, we may proceed.
Do we need a roll call, or are you people comfortable voting yes or no? Or would you like it be posted in front of you so you can vote yes or no? Three choices.
Roll call. No preference.
Feel free to post it then. Okay, then go ahead, please.
Mr. Snell?
Yes.
Mr. Bear?
Yes.
Mr. Walls?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
No.
Mr. Duckham?
Yes.
Mr. Poleski?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Chairman Shatwell?
Yes.
Eight, seven yes. Eight, seven yes.
Thank you, everyone, for your patience. We've arrived at public comment, this is the second public comment. We have two minutes to speak to the board. Each individual will state their name and address the board. You may only address the board once under this public comment. Opportunity may not yield your time to others. Board members will not debate nor answer questions at this time. Public comment is now open.
Hi, I'm Jeannie Brown from Summit Township. This MNRA vaccine has been taken, has taken out the God gene we're all born with. It has changed the people that have been vaccinated. People who took the vaccine have said that they don't feel God anymore. These people pushing this shot don't want God in our schools. They shut down churches during 2020 and outlawed church services and arrested preachers and priests, but kept big business open like stores and bars, strip clubs. We are dealing with good versus evil right now, and good always wins. These people are making 100,000 plus off people they kill in the hospitals, harvesting their organs, and even the coroner gets more money if they are diagnosed with COVID. There is a two to three week wait now to get organs instead of one to two years. I just want to say, look at grand-jury.net, and they lay out everything you need to know about these vaccines. Thank you.
Peter Bormuth. You know, I want to say that if the person who had been shot on October 15th had been black, there would probably be 50 to 75 people behind me who would be speaking, but because it was a white person, I'm the only one up here raising this issue. But I want to say to you, white lives matter too, and we do not want our sheriff's department or other law enforcement shooting unarmed citizens. And I also want to say that all of our problems right now in this country are because Christians are trying to put their evil morality on our government and our people. They're trying to stop women from getting abortion, they're trying to make LGBTQ people non-citizens and take away their rights, they're trying to push their evil Christian religion into our public schools. I'm tired of it, and I hope all the other secular people and other religious people in this country are tired of it too.
And don't put your evil scum Jesus on me, you can believe in him.
Peter, you're out of order! Peter, you're out of order! I'm going to ask you to sit down, please.
My name is Marcy Jankovic, I'm from Summit Township. I am very grateful for all the efforts our elected officials and governments are making to afford equal protection of the law for all humans, including those in the fetal stage of development.
Hi, Jennifer Beninger, I left out some important things. So also, do the people that are receiving these vaccines know that doctors are being threatened with loss of license if they speak unfavorably about the vaccine? And also if they speak favorably about alternative treatments, of which there are good, I know personally, very good and proven treatments, but of course, there's no profit for Big Pharma for those treatments. So we need to be offering that to the people too. And if I can change the mind of one person in this room that believes that getting the vaccine has been beneficial. According to the CDC, the death rate for children under 19 from COVID-19 is statistically zero. Children have not been dying from COVID. All children who have died had underlying comorbidities, therefore, healthy children should not be vaccinated. And as far as adults, all they've been hearing through the media, we need to try to help change their minds. Did you know that until COVID, the vaccinations that were introduced, if they caused more than, I think it's 50 deaths, they were eliminated from the market? According to the WHO, there have been at least 2,457,386 adverse events worldwide. This is a million more cases than all adverse events reported over the last 53 years of all vaccines administered in 1968. Thank you. So, you lost my train of thought. So anyway, I just wanted to, just make it clear, there are no benefits, only harm from those vaccines. Thank you very much.
Any other public comment?
My name's Patricia Gainer, I live in Spring Arbor Township. I just watched a five-hour presentation about the vaccines, and a lot of the people that are in government that are pushing these vaccines are also on the boards of pharmaceutical companies, just so we know that. So anyway, back to the dog park issue. I'm reading from the history. Okay, so it says, "Mr. Sparks' original plan was to acquire the property and convert it into a skating pond. His vision grew and soon included plans called for development of a park, which would include a golf course, lagoons, canal, toboggan slides, landscape grounds, picnic areas, a clubhouse, and cascades." The Sparks Foundation was created in the fall of 1929 to develop the land into a recreation spot and a meditation center. It says nothing about selling it. It says nothing about selling it to get money for other projects. It's for the use of the, the land is for development, for human resources and enjoyment.
Benjamin Whiting again, as Sheriff Shutey, and Madam Clerk can probably attest, I'll never give up an opportunity for a rebuttal argument, I would just like to refocus this board, that once we make this decision to sell this property, this is a bell that we cannot unring. On the local level, in the neighborhood level, this is a benefit to the local neighborhoods and the community at large. I would invite this board, if there's any reservation for this decision to be reversed, and for to invite the board to go out and check out this property, specifically on the first fireworks that offered for Memorial Day weekend. I want the board to take the opportunity to see how families, not only from the local neighborhoods, from the city of Jackson, from the surrounding townships, and also from other members of society from mid-Michigan area come to enjoy this parcel of land, these three parcels of land. Once we sell this property, this is a bell that we cannot unring. This will be forever a loss to the Jackson County community, and specifically to the Cascades Park. So again, I would redraw the commissioner's attention to reconsider this and to not make the wrong decision that will forever negatively impact our community. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Riley, I live in Jackson. I don't know about the circumstances that may pertain to the trees that are still in the school, that they want to plow over to do the parking lot, so if there's, if it's still an open thing, I would like to be the tree hugger and stand up for those trees.
Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Seeing no other public comment, Commissioner comments. Commissioner Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I'll be brief. I just wanted to, just to mention, and I guess in some ways just to piggyback on some of the comments Mr. Bormuth has shared, I hope that as we have looked at the situation with the sheriff's department as well as with the prosecutor's office that we've done and are currently doing or need to do, the necessary investigation, being sure that everything was done in order, because just as Mr. Bormuth has stated, it doesn't matter if they were black, white, or, it doesn't matter, right is right and wrong is wrong. And so if there's an investigation that needs to continue to happen, or if things need to be looked in further, I would ask that we would continue to do such. Again, it doesn't matter whether, what race they are, as I said before, right is right and wrong is wrong, and we need to be sure that justice is being served. Thank you, Mr. Chair, I have nothing further.
Commissioner Bear?
Thank you, Chairman. Two items I want to go over, two things I want to ask my fellow board members to help me with. I've been reviewing our county health department website, particularly all their COVID-related data. Page after page, reference after reference, about all, One Direction. Get the shot, it's good for you, it's good for your two-year-old. Everything on there is one-sided. There are plenty of doctors that disagree with the current emphasis of trying to force everybody to get the shot. Coercion is not consent. We need to help our citizens make informed consent, informed decisions. So I'm asking that we add to our health department website links to other organizations that list the dangers of the shot. Not a single thing that's presented on our current website, I think I've opened every single one of those documents. Nothing talks to the, the adverse reactions that people have been having. We should need, we need, I believe we need links to like Dr. Malone. Dr. Malone is the guy who created the RNA and the mRNA technology. Nobody knows that stuff better than him. He created it, and he says, "Do not give this to children." His firm belief is that you only give us that vaccine to people who are 65 and older and have comorbidity conditions. I don't want to change the entire focus on our health department website to anti-vax. I'm not anti-vax, I'm anti for me personally, but if you want to do it, you can go ahead. I won't. We need, we need a balance on there, so people are, can be fully informed and make intelligent decisions. So I'm going to be asking my other commissioners, help me with this. If nothing else, I will be coming with a resolution next month to add various documents and links to our website that are putting out the whole story. The vaccine isn't effective if people at this table have had the vaccine and they still got COVID. You can't call it effective. People have had the vaccine and have still died from COVID. So I just want both sides of the story put out there, that's to be fair and honest. Second item, our soil erosion sedimentation control ordinance. Article in the news last week, this past week, about the hydroelectric facility on the Kalamazoo River had to lower the elevation in the impoundment to do some dam repair. I don't know how many of you may have seen that article. But when they lowered the impoundment level, just a huge amount of sediment, hundreds of cubic yards of sediment, just rolled on downstream and caused environmental hazards, caused actually a rerouting of the river, because so much sediment got pushed into one area, the river went around it. There's nothing that this hydroelectric, that any hydroelectric utility does, nothing they do creates sediment. Every bit of that sediment came from upstream communities that were allowing their sediment to just flow into the river. Other people caused this environmental problem that now the Kalamazoo River has. I firmly believe we need to stop putting county and city sediment into the river. I think that's the, we can't just keep dumping our garbage in there, letting it go downstream and become somebody else's problem. So I'm going to be pushing hard for getting the recommendations that I have made put in there and passed that way. The city is the biggest polluter in the county. Anybody, we see, it's a good time right now, we see these big snow piles in all parking lots. If you go look at it, they're black, there's so much dirt on there. I mean, these snow piles are no longer white, the snow has melted away, and all the dirt, debris, pieces of fenders and bumpers, it's all exposed on these snow piles. Right now, all that dirt just washes right into the river. So I'm going to be asking help from my fellow commissioners on that one as well, we need to clean up our act. Thank you.
Any other commissioners? Commissioner Snell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you know, we all see it on a lot of committees, and I just want to give a brief update on a couple that I sit on. One would be the Jackson Brownfield, City Jackson Brownfield. Just cleared out a site for a new Big B at North and Cooper, repaying the money they borrowed from the Jackson County Brownfield. With FEMA program that is administered by United Way, kind of about triple the amount of money this year because of COVID, and we're taking RFPs for our main concern, which is shelter and food. And if anybody has a problem paying their electrical bills or the gas bill, the place to call is 211. They will give you the contact for someone who can help you. Last night, I attended the Northwest School Board meeting, and the superintendent reported zero COVID cases. 3,600 students and over 500 staff, so zero in Northwest School District. I thought that was really an achievement, and it looks like maybe we're coming out of this, I hope. Back to one of the things we've talked about today, we've heard a lot of people talk about the Sparks Foundation parks. And I appreciate Mr. Sparks being here and clearing that up. I couldn't find in my title search any link to these two and a half acres to the Sparks Foundation, or to the Sparks. And not that it was really an exhaustive search, but it was interesting to note that that's, that seems to be true. In fact, about 33 acres around the park is still owned by the Sparks Foundation, not the county. That doesn't mean I'm for selling it, doesn't mean I'm against it, means I'm continuing to review what's going on there. My kids, my oldest played football on that field. My kids, my oldest played football on that field, Pee-wee football, practices every night for, I think, forever, at least a sound fellow of that. So, what we do, I'm not sure what we're going to do yet, but I know that we're still looking at getting some clarity on this. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Entertainer motion to adjourn?
Commissioner Kennedy? Just wanted to thank everyone for coming out tonight, it's great to see people engaged with their local government, regardless of your viewpoints, it's important that you're paying attention to what's going on. Also, if you haven't been paying attention, there's some severe weather, it's probably going to be hit in the next couple days, so plan for some more times for your morning commutes, and please be safe. Thank you.
Move to adjourn. Have a motion and support, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried.